Hi guys and welcome back to my channel. I'm Luna Faye and today we're playing Coral Island. Keep in mind, this is still an early access game and with that, let's get playing. Okay, so last time we did the beach cleanup. So yeah, we have one day left of this month. One day left of this season and then we have fall tomorrow. We do have enough money. We'll get the kitchen done. I think we needed, let's see. Want to say wood, probably stone. Um, I don't remember if we needed iron or bronze or not. So let's get that going. No, I'm just gonna grab a bunch of stuff. Just take it all with us, just to be on the safe side. On the run back down here, uh, let's put some more bronze in here, just in case we need that. Honestly, don't remember what we need. So let's grab these bananas. We could put them in here. We don't have to water anything. So we can just harvest. Oh, we got honey. Nice. But the, I want to put some fall flowers out, but let's go ahead and stick those in there for now. There's some things going because that, that honey just takes so long to process. Uh, we'll let those go and then the flowers will take a few days to grow. Uh, once we get them planted tomorrow, we'll get some peppers, ocras, a tomato. Let's check over here. Oh, I see a pepper back there. Now that you can see these plants, let's discard in such a mess. We will get it fixed up. I'm looking real nice. Um, okay. So we got some fruit. Let's see. Yeah. If those two, everything else should count. So that's good. Let's check on our little chickie and duck. Baba Daisy. I know it's raining and you probably shouldn't pull them out, but I pulled them out anyways. I'm just coming outside. I don't want you eating the hay inside. Good morning. Hello. Nice to see you. Hope you had a good night. Anyways, let's get this back in here and our milk. I never go through the gate. Oh, go over. There we go. Alright, we'll get the butter going. We should get egg going and I'm not gonna put any of these in here. Well, maybe those two, but these ones all should count for our overall score for Sam. Uh, these aren't good quality. So let's see if we can put these in. Oh, we can. Nice. Okay, let's put these in there and then it's nine o'clock. So we should be able to go up here and upgrade our house finally. Get a kitchen. Uh, I guess like when the game first came out, cooking was like the way to make money. But then they like nerfed all the recipes and so they're not like worth any money really. So like cooking's not the way. Are they closed? Oh no, they're open. Like so cooking, I guess is not the way to go to make money. But I mean, it doesn't help. It doesn't hurt, you know? So let's get upgrade house. Okay. Oh, we need silver too. I didn't realize that. Okay. Dang it. We're gonna have to run back. Oh, we have three ready. Let's run back. Grab that stuff. See, I just didn't remember what we needed. And if we had our horse, we could get around faster, but the horse is really expensive. That's like 15,000, I think. Plus you have to buy the house, which I don't remember how much the house is. Yeah, I don't remember how much the, not stable. Yeah, staple. Oh my gosh. Get in my pocket and you get in my pocket. Alright, and now let's get this up here and get our kitchen finally. Oh, also with the kitchen, if I remember correctly, the kitchen is very basic. And so you have to go to the furniture store or the electronics store. And you have to like buy all the kitchen upgrades. So we'll have to work on that too. We're always so broke. Um, 5,000. Got 5,000. We've got all that. Let's do it. How do I do it? There we go. Awesome. Thank you. I'll work on it first thing in the morning. It should be done in a couple of days. Oh, okay. I thought it was gonna be instant. Uh, let's go donate these gems to the museum really quick since we're just right here. Probably should clean that up too. Whatever. Let's go donate these gems. And I think after we donate these, never gonna load. Um, hello. Oh, there we go. Uh, I want to, I think go down into the ocean. What do we get? Dragon fruit seed. Oh, first let's go dump our pockets and then we'll go into the ocean. Cause I feel like I want to do that today. What is it? Sunday? Uh, that's fine. Let's go dump our pockets. Oh wait, that's right. I saw myself put those in when I edited the video, my last video. And I was like, oh gosh, that doesn't go in there. We need to sell that. Alright, let's get this stuff in here. Do I want this? Uh, I think I'll hold on to it. Probably won't plant it right now. But after we move around the the farm and stuff, maybe after we get the greenhouse, might plant it. Can we make that vortex thing for the ocean? Let's see. There it is. No. Oh, I need glass. Um, I'll make glass, but I'm not waiting around for it. Let's see. Okay, let's go down into the ocean. I know we just unlocked the um, I know we unlocked the, is it the air temple? Uh, with the giants, with the mines, but I don't really feel like doing that today. Uh, go diving. I want to do this today. Especially since we upgraded our sickle. So we shouldn't, we should be able to like clear this off pretty quick. So yeah, I'm gonna get cleaning and I'll be back. Alright, we gotta get back to the farm. It's getting late and I am running out of stamina, but at least we got one of those little, what are they called? Uh, I can't think of what they're called. At least I got one of them done. Get all this put for sale. Let's see, that guy. Can't remember exactly which of these shells the goddess temple needed, but that can sell. That's the same as that one, right? Hmm, yeah, that should be good. Papaya jam. That sounds delicious. Did we donate? I don't think we did. I think that's our first one. Alright, we're gonna have to run over to the goddess temple in the morning and we need to do Sam's. Oops, go to bed. Need to go over to Sam's, I think. So, oh, the dehydrator. Nice. The dehydrator, you put like stuff you get from the ocean, like all the shells and things like that in the, um, seaweed and stuff in there. But stuff's like, it's not worth any, really any money just selling it. And it's not really worth any money dehydrating it. So I mean, I don't know. I don't see the point in the dehydrator. Uh, farming. Nice. Ooh, dragon fruit's not too bad. Let's see. Oh, look at that papaya jam. Nice. Oh, and the jackfruit jam. That, I like jackfruit and I don't like jackfruit. Ginger. Mayonnaise. Mining, diving. Yeah. So like the seaweed, it's two. When you dehydrate it, it's like three or something like that. It's not worth much more. Uh, yeah, those ruby dragons are pretty, they're worth catching for sure. And then the butter. Nice. We got like half our money back from our kitchen. I wonder if it'll be done today. No, that sucks. Oh, it'll happen anytime. Ooh, we could go look at getting some new clothes. Oh, oh yeah, it's fall. My tree's dead. Uh, wait, I need this. Make some glass. That can go in there. That can go in there. Let's go check the goddess temple really quick. Then we'll come back and do all the farm stuff. Yes, purple sea urgent. Okay, scallop. Easter and oyster and blue muscle. These three we should find soon enough, but we can sell the rest. Fall. Okay, let's see. We need to find this black trumpet, a fig, an orchid, and we need to plant pumpkins and rice. So we need to go over to Sam's. He's not open yet. So let's go back to the farm. And we'll take care of our animals. Oh, speaking of animals, I bought this game on the summer sale and I wasn't planning on making a let's play of it. It's just kind of fun for myself. It is wildflower. I don't know if any of you guys have heard of this game. It is so fun and I just got little chickens on that game. I always forget to feed the poor thing. But that game is so fun. The whole game is voice acted. I don't know. I really, really, really like it. I wasn't planning on making a let's play though, but if that's something somebody's interested in, let me know in the comments and maybe I will make a let's play. Because I really, really like that game. It is so fun. Uh, let's get our chickies and our duckies. I keep saying chickies, but one's a duck. Um, hmm, my OCD doesn't like this. Scattered all around. We gotta shave, oh, good job. Shave the baba. Getting the milk, Daisy. Ooh, is that the milk we needed? That is. We'll have to go back over to the goddess temple and grab our eggs. Eggs. Perfect. Alright, I'm gonna put our tools down. We'll put the eggs away and make them into mayonnaise. My husband was watching me play Coral Islands, uh, last week's Coral Island. And I was like, I was like, oh, look how good this duck mayonnaise is. And he's like, duck mayonnaise? That sounds disgusting. And I was like, you don't eat it in real life, obviously. He's like, that's gross. Uh, let's turn that into some sriracha. But I just had to laugh because duck mayonnaise really doesn't sound very appetizing. And head over back to the temple. I mean, I've only had oh, not this one. Um, oops, this one. I think I've only ever had, I want to say duck, like once, maybe twice in my life. And it was always when we went to like a Chinese restaurant. And from what I can remember, it was like, it's, it's a different kind of flavor. So I wasn't like overly in love with it, but I didn't hate it either. So yeah, duck mayonnaise would be, would be pretty interesting to try. Just saying that duck mani. This is weird. Uh, anyways, oh yeah, we can grab up some forables. We definitely want to get that uh, fall stuff offered up to the goddess sooner rather than later. So I don't forget. Cause you know me, I forget everything all the time. Short attention span over here. I want to get over here. Yes. And then to the shops. They should be open. It's Monday. I want to check out this one. Uh, yeah, this one. It's open. Oh. Close on Monday and Friday. Of course, of course they're closed because I need you. Uh, this is a furniture store. Have we been in here yet? I don't think we have. Or maybe we have. Can like, get different kinds of furniture. That's cool. Oh no, I don't actually want to buy that. Um, yeah, there's like, you can look at it all. You can sort of by category. You can do it by style. There's one that's like, uh, kind of like a gamer one. Where's that? Yeah, this one. Kind of cool. I like that flooring. I don't know. They're neat. Well, we don't have the money for it right now, but we should upgrade our kitchen. Oh, that's in, there we go. Thank you all for coming to today's town meeting. I didn't know there was a town meeting. Today's agenda is set up. Today's agenda is to set up the next round of cemetery cleaning. As you all know, heavy rain seemed to clog up our sewers. Pablo and his brother worked hard to clear the sewers around town. Thanks to them, we didn't have a bad flood. The season's budget will also go into fixing a leaked roof at the community center. Last on the agenda, the cemetery is showing a lot of moss and let's face it, I need volunteers. Who is going to be, who is it going to be, folks? Oh, great. Thank you. I didn't even raise my hand. Tomorrow at 10 AM then, meeting adjourned. I wonder if we go over there, if they'll be over there at 10. Pablo, don't leave yet. Pablo. Why am I staying? I didn't volunteer. This man right here, always the first to volunteer. What a fine young man. I agree. Here you go, son. Have some of my fish soup. I made plenty. Ooh, that's a few days old, bro. I wouldn't eat it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to contribute. I have nothing but time. You have to forgive me for not giving more. Look at you, dear. So humble. Now you must not think that way. Instead, look at what you have given to the community, which is plenty. What a wise way to look at it. I just, I know that marriage isn't in the game and relationships aren't in the game yet. I cannot pick who I want to date when is available. I like Pablo and I like Siri and I like Sura? Sura. And then I like, um, Kenny. I don't know who to choose. It's always great to hear perspectives. It's always great to hear perspectives from successful people. Oh, you. Always with the compliment. Uh huh huh. That's Pablo for you. What do I need to do to unlock the shrine? Quickly reach your community, fill the market with, oh, we had to finish Sam's thing, I think. Let's check this out. Oh, okay. I thought I was gonna be talking. No, we don't need any more overalls. We already have overalls. So we have 3,000. There, let's see. Starting to get cooler. Do we want to buy like a warm kind of outfit? That's cute. Do we want to get? I'm so puffy in that one. Maybe something like that with some pants. This might be showing my age a bit, but I am not a fan of the ripped jeans. If I want ripped jeans, I can rip them myself with age. I want a nice new fresh pair of pants. Wow, is it really flared? Do I have any normal jeans? Oh, here we go. Hmm. Kind of like those pants. We're already over budget. Uh, let's see. Need a cheaper top. Oh, that's more expensive. Oh, that's a cute top. Oh, that's way over budget. Hmm. Can't buy a top without bottoms. I mean, we can, but then we can't wear it. Not running around in my underwear. I really like this top. Is there cheaper pants? Then we need shoes. How much is shoes? Dang, one pair of shoes is a thousand bucks? Oh, some flip flops? I don't really keep our feet warm. Oh, and it just goes over budget. I think we're just gonna have to wait on clothes. A monocle. Now I'm just looking. Oh, I don't like that it cuts your hair. Oh. I hate when hats do that. Alright, well, that's okay. We don't really need to spend money. We need, uh, fruits and vegetables. Didn't hurt to look though. Sam's should be open now. Alright, how much is a new bat? 12,000. Oof. That's gonna be a bit. Let's see what you got. Oh, we needed rice. Should we buy a couple of these? How much is each area? Is it one, two, three, four, eight? Eight per area? I don't know. Oh, we need orchids. And grapes. Uh, I believe those were pretty good, like money wise. Ooh, cocoa. And pear. I think that's new. Ooh, those are expensive though. Let's get, let's just spend the rest of our money on hmm, actually. Let's get, let's get a cocoa and then the rest will be grapes. Yeah, let's do that. And we needed some more grass for the animals. Because winter is coming. And they're gonna run out of food if we don't have enough hay for them. How much of that grass did we get? Eight. So that's not a lot. Well, let's go get our garden planted. So that can get growing. Oh, buck. Here is case of Coral Islands Lotus. Maybe after we get the garden planted, we can run about collecting harvestables. Um, let's go down here. Yeah, does this area needs more plants? Let's see. Ooh, do we have any fertilizer first? And can we make any more? Fertilizer. Two. That's okay. Did we have some still in here? We did not. Okay. That's okay. We can just manually do it. Okay, let's get this stuff planted. Alright, let's go exploring. Uh, we have a little bit of time. Oh my God, $59 left. Um, but yeah, let's go quickly. Uh, we have a little bit of, oh my God, we have nine dollars left. Um, but yeah, let's go quickly go exploring around, see what harvestables we can find and uh, see if we can get anything donated to the goddess temple. Alright, let's see. I know we caught, yeah, at least one butterfly we could donate. We cut this flower, man. This makes the best honey and it's worth so much money, like a thousand or two thousand. It's so good. What's that? Crab? I've not donated that. Let's hand that over since we're right here. This throws away a crab. Eat that. Jeez. Okay, let's get back to the farm. Actually, we'll get back to the farm. We'll jump out to the goddess temple. See if there's anything we can donate, cause I think there was at least one plant we picked up. Maybe something else, but I know at least one. And then we will call it a night after that. Uh, I don't think it was in here. Oh yeah, fall. Okay, so this guy. We didn't find that. We're working on growing those. Gotta keep our eye out for a fig. And then let's see, was there anything else we could donate? Yes. Oh, we already did. Okay. Alright, so let's head back to the farm. We'll empty our pockets and then we'll go to bed. Um, actually, I'm gonna take this flower down here and put it by the beehives. Yeah. Uh, that I'm gonna keep to make into fertilizer. I'm gonna sell this one, cause it's got the star. So that should count towards our Sam's quest. I don't know about. I don't even know if we can put these in to make fertilizer, but we'll, we'll test it out. Oh, I should have put that down there. Whoops. Oh wow. But yeah, we got a couple fossils, which is great. Let's go to bed. So we have farming. Not too bad. Then foraging, ranching. Duck mayonnaise, man. Diving, catching. Not too bad. Now we have a little bit more money. Alright, but with that, guys, I'm gonna call it an episode. Thank you so much for watching me play this Coral Islands. Don't forget to hit the like, subscribe and notifications to see me play more. And I'll play with you again soon. Bye.